You are watching XS Laporte County Channel 97. Coming up next is July 28, 2022 meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounty.org.
All right. So we can call this meeting to order. This is the annual meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Your time is now 3:08. And then after this annual meeting, we'll have our regular board meeting. Just let everybody know, okay? Can you call the roll, please?
Nathan Patrick.
Present.
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Tulani Rayna.
Present.
Virginia Keating.
Present.
Kenneth Fly.
Present.
Stacy Bennet.
Present.
Michael Vincent.
Present.
Okay, so the agenda here. We can do it. We can do it now. We'll do the pledge allegiance now and then. And then, yeah, then we can do the pledge allegiance now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yes, so we have just moved the pledge allegiance from the regular meeting to this. Okay, so before we get started, I'd just like to point out a couple things. So we are having two separate, we have two separate meetings happening. We have our annual meeting, which is to discuss, which per our bylaws, we are to have an annual meeting every year, which is to happen in July, okay? And I would also like to recognize something. Last week, so we are interim, our interim leadership, and that's something that was not made clear, and I take full responsibility for that. You know, there's a, we've been trying to come together from a lot of moving pieces and get back on track, and I dropped the ball on that. I do thank Ms. Keating for pointing some things out to me. But we are interim, vice chair interim or interim chair and interim vice chair. Also, another thing I'd like to point out, after, after the last week's meeting, there was a, there was a letter, there was a chair or a press release that was generated by myself. And it was generated prematurely in error, and I left some people out. Namely, I left Mr. Commissioner Fly out, and I do apologize for that. It wasn't anything in malice or intentions, ill intentions, and we had those conversations, but you know, it generated some hard feelings, and I take full responsible, full responsibility for that, okay? And so I'll do everything in my power to ensure that it doesn't, something like that doesn't happen again, because no one likes to be, feel left out or not included, so.
You accept it, Chairman.
So with that being said, we have to elect officers, okay? So we have to elect the chairman and we have to elect the vice chairman. So at this time, I'm gonna move, or I'm gonna make a motion, or open the floor up to elect. Yes, ma'am.
Why don't you just have Sharon, okay, may ask her motion on the president, and then she'll ask for the vice president, and then you two go out to the next meeting. So that's, that's the proper way of doing it, because you can't, you can't do that. We can't make the motion.
I can't make motions, but I'm opening the floor for someone to make a motion.
Why don't you ask Sharon to open the floor? That's the way we normally did it.
So I can, but at this point in time, I'm gonna open the floor for someone to make the motion, and then we can move on from there.
I move to nominate Nathan Patrick as president.
Sorry.
You sign on the roll?
Yeah. Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Absent.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then now we need to make a, I'll entertain a motion for vice chairman as well.
I nominate Mike. Oh, my bad.
Second.
Second, too.
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani, Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Aye.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye. Right quick for the, can I just say, Mr. McCormick worked really hard, and I think he really deserved that vice president chair, man. I think he's been having us going the right way lately, man, and I hope he continues to guide us right, man. Bless you.
Thank you. It's all one together.
All right, and with that business being taken care of, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this section.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are now moving on.
No pocket break?
What's that?
No.
Okay, we are now moving on to our regular meeting, and the time is now 3:13 for our regular housing authority meeting. So once again, we are all loaded up with a lot of information. So we'll move through this, one piece at a time here. So can you please call off the first? Item, please, yes.
Okay, the first item is all business, and it's approval of the board minutes, March 31, 2022.
I move to accept the minutes as ordered.
There you go, okay. Point of order. You can't do that, because there were only three members at that meeting. So the other four can't vote to approve it, so you're not gonna have a quorum, okay? Just to make it clear.
And can you expound upon that?
I, I don't know what you want to ask me.
Three members at what, three men?
You three members, okay, you, Rodney, and Mr. Fly were on the board at the time, okay? To have, to be able to pass these minutes, you need four people. Four members were not on the board at that time. They have no idea what, what went on at the board. Even though you've got minutes, though, they weren't there.
So are you, are you making a motion to table this until we get legal counsel?
Well, I don't think you can even do that. I think you're just gonna have to.
She's saying we can't accept these board minutes into record at any time.
The minutes for informational purposes only, that's right. That would be the only thing you could do.
Just information.
Because they moved to have these minutes, all three of these minutes for informational purposes only. Okay, that's, that's the only way you could do it.
Okay, would you like to, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion with the minutes for March 31, 2022, April 13, 2022, and April 28, 2022, be for informational purposes only. I second.
Okay, let's have it on the roll.
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Aye.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Thank you very much for that information, Ms. Keating.
I'd like to ask a question while, while we're still on minutes.
Yes, sir.
The other minutes that I've read from other boards and other commissions have been a, a different type of minute. It's almost like bullet points. It gives the high level.
Right.
Not, not specific, and the ones, the minutes that I read seem to be like a transcript. Are we gonna continue with the transcript type of meeting minutes? Or are we gonna go with a regular, not so much word verbatim as what was said at the meeting?
So that would have to be directed to Ms. Hutton here, who, do we know who, who does our minutes?
The secretary does.
The secretary, so we could make a recommendation to have them a different type of way. So I, I understand fully what you're saying. There's supposed to be a high level, boom, 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 but we can make the recommendation. So do you wanna make that recommendation?
I would, yes, thank you.
May I ask something to the discussion? We do have to still go through the committee. We have to appoint people to the committee. That can be addressed to one of the committees, I believe, so. And we can make sure, because there's a lot of stuff that we have to change, flip back the right way as past where it was. So let's just get through this, get the committee back done, and then we can, we all work together to make it right. Make sense? Sure. So we have a lot of committee seats that we have to fill, so, thank you.
And that's one of the things that can go through that committee. We can make those recommendations and work with the director, whoever does it, and get it how we want it.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, can we move on?
The next on the agenda is Resolution Number 2022-02, Approval for Vacancy Rehab.
Okay, so this line here.
According to this, I was gonna ask a question.
Yeah, sorry. If you can see under here, this has been tabled. Just wanted to point that out. And you can go ahead, Commissioner.
This resolution toward rehab of some apartments throughout our city, units throughout our city, at this time, the contracts were never getting to us. I was under the impression, correct me if I'm wrong, there were two other companies that bid on this, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and as of today's day, none of us have, none of us have the other bids from the other companies, correct?
You have the tab relationship from the other company that was done in the open bid. That's what's in your.
We, we don't have the other proposals or nothing from other companies, right?
Correct. Not the actual proposal.
We don't have a bid. Do we have a bid? Do we have a bid from each one of those companies?
Not the bid packet itself. We have the tabulation, because that's, that bid was done open to the public. And so the public that was, that attended that bid couldn't have asked for the.
Because there's three members that's left here that came from the old, the old administration. At this time, I'm moving that we do not accept this and reopen the bidding process back up so that we all can be privy to the process in the right form.
I would want to ask too also, because it's apparent that came to me that what monies would be appropriated to cover the cost of these rehab and.
Add up capital.
So that's different from when we initially was trying to get this passed, one, two, three, four, five, six months, four months ago. We were gonna use the monies from, what was it, extra monies that came, this had to help me refresh.
The short file money that I was instructed, we couldn't use the short file money for the capital improvements in all the operations.
Is that the $640,000 grant money that we was getting?
That was the 600, short file.
Is that money still available, though? We have that in hold still, right?
We still have that money.
All right.
The total is not six, because we're using it in operations.
Forgive me, there's a motion on the table, and.
Is your motion to deny and then to go out and see who bids, is that?
Reopen, yes.
Let's make your motion.
Yes, I, I motion that we deny the Resolution 2022-02, and that we reopen the bidding process and make sure everyone, everyone here receives the proper paperwork pursuant to, pursuant to state statute of federal law.
Nathan Patrick.
Is there a second on that motion?
I have a second now.
I'm sorry.
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
And may I add, because of the importance of how that we need these units rehabbing and such, please get started as soon as possible, please, so we can get this, get this done so we can, so the residents don't have to suffer too much water. Thank you.
Okay. We can move on to the next line item.
The next line item is Resolution 2020-04, Amending the Housing Authority of the City of Michigan City Bylaws, and that is tabled.
I make the motion. Keep that on the table. You have the members that need to be involved in looking at these bylaws.
Do I ask, yes, we have a second. Director.
Do I need to? Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
And I'm moving that we don't put this back on the table until we have our attorney present. We don't, we need to, I personally would like to deny it and wait for our attorney, but I don't think that, I don't, I'm stuck right now, so.
I say deny it. Let's wait for our attorney. Deny it and hope.
So are you wanting to amend your, you wanna amend your original mission, no?
I have a question. So the amended, obviously, we have bylaws, and then they were, there were amended bylaws. When were those amended?
The TA, I think he listed it in his report, the exact date he did the bylaws.
And will he be here in person for our next meeting?
I can't answer that. I did let him know that you are wanting to meet with him, and so he has not gotten back with.
Let's, let's all for the record.
I, I withdraw my motion and wait till our attorney, till we have our attorney. Thank you.
I second that taking it down. I want you guys to know, to understand that these bylaws that I represented, presented here, the whole board had not paid any participation in changing them bylaws or getting them amended. And so that's the proper way to just get it all the way going to the attorney, so we all can be involved in the changing of something so, you know, prominent like that.
Okay. All right, can we move on to the, then, or did we, did we vote on, did we vote on that already?
Yes, it was seven to zero.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
Resolution Number 2022-05 is the, for the hybrid board meeting, which is also tabled.
Any discussion on this?
I make motion to leave this on the table until we have an attorney to take a look at the proposal and then advise accordingly.
Second.
Director.
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
All right. That concludes the old business section. Now we're moving on to new business. Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, being a new member and new to this, the whole system, I was asked to jump on the, the board and be a committee person, and I, I wanna help. But I wanna help in such a way that the help that was needed gets out there. I just listed some, some questions, and forgive me if the questions that I had has already been addressed, or, or maybe, and stop me if I need to take this offline to someone else, but in going up to a few lines above old business, we're talking about rehabs.
Okay.
How do we know when something needs rehab? Is there a list of the homes that we are in, in charge of and that we look at? Is there, is there a manager? Is there a property manager that goes through?
Yes.
Do we get reports monthly from property managers? Do the residents call in with complaints to the manager, and do we see those? Just looking for, because quite frankly, I took a ride around and just hit some of the basic homes that, that we're looking for to help people.
Right.
And, and quite embarrassing, some of them.
Yeah.
If we, if we have property managers, our property manager should be out and taking care of some of these issues. The, the people that, that we're trying to help should not have to show up to meetings here or, or constantly be on the property manager when I can go drive by at 20 miles an hour and look at a building and see, this is not residential damage. This is long-term neglect. And if it's a long-term neglect issue, then the property manager, everyone said we do have a property manager.
Yes.
Are they present?
May I, may I address these issues that we all know about? And I think it'd be better if you bring your issues to the executive director and we need to move forward with the, with our president, and we'll bring you up to speed on all of that.
But here's another frustration I have, if I, if I may. We're, we're a board and we're committee people that are trying to help. We meet once a month. And as I go through, and I know you've struggled in the past, and there was a lot of tripping over our own feet. And I didn't see anything in the transcripts. I didn't see anything on videos that I went back and looked that are actually helping the people that we're here to help.
Right.
And if, if meeting more than once a month is what we need, or, and I'm sorry, I might be jumping the gun, but you talk about subcommittees.
Yeah. We don't main committee.
If subcommittees are the answer, I'm all for that, and, and Mrs. Keating will tell you, sometimes I, I jump off on tangents because I get a little, little passionate in my willingness to help, and I, and I wanna see progress. I don't wanna just see.
I agree.
Lots on the board just because we want our name in the news.
Right, right.
I wanna piggyback as a new member also on the total agreement with everything you're saying, Michael. I think that, again, we need to do things decent and in order, and I think that we need to be privy to everything that's going on with every form of housing that is in Michigan City. So if that means that even as a group, that we need to collectively go take time out to go and see it collectively, I think maybe that might be something that we can consider doing as well. In addition to, like you said, you went on your own and go by, I think maybe as a group you can see things and point stuff out that maybe someone else may not see.
Ms. Keating.
I think what you're talking about here is information. There has to be a flow of information. And that has to happen at our meetings as well as outside of our meetings. At our meetings, I don't see where there's a provision here in the agenda that says you present this by, if somebody presents one of these things us, they, we need to have somebody come before us, if it's the director, fine, and explain exactly what it is they're looking for, why they're looking for it, if it's gonna cost money, what is the price, all of that kind of stuff. That needs to be built into your agenda. In addition to your agenda, having that in there, it also has to have a provision where we discuss, and so the president asks for input, and then the, the people on this board will ask the director or ask whoever it is for information. And that way we can all participate, we can all learn, and then we can move forward and do the things we need to be doing. I agree with Mike. He's really good at this stuff, and I thoroughly am glad that you brought that up.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna add to this that we, point out, we, we already marked several issues, and forgive us for not being able to have the agenda totally together, because one of the things that we have to make sure that we have, we will have comments from all board members who have the right to make, if we have a section in our team where everybody can make comments before we will cite them. So as you understand, we're new to this, and we don't have our attorney. And I'm, I'm, I'm more leaning towards being more cautious, cautious, and making sure that we have attorney present, so we don't make the same mistakes the last administration had. There's a reason for new members, sir, because there's been a lot of nonsense that's going on, but we're here to correct it, work together, and I don't want anybody asking questions at these meetings. But I like to get through the agenda again, and if you have any questions, I agree with this feeling that you can go ahead and ask your questions, but let's try to get through the agenda, and I promise you, things are gonna be better. The next meeting, the next meeting, the next meeting. We stay together, it's gonna work great. Thank you.
One last thing. There's no better blueprint on how to conduct these meetings and how to handle the agenda than the city council. They are, they are bar none the best, okay? So there, take a look at what happens at city council and start working from that point, is what I would say.
And I just, just one quick thing about, two different things that I have. Point of one, point of one, we need to stay with our board. We, we need to stay with our board and. All good.
Public comment, would you, would you?
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, let's move on. So we have the board approvals and informational updates, committee appointments. So I have made a list of the different committees, and in your bylaws, you will see. So let's see here, page seven in your bylaws. I don't know if you all have them on you. Okay. And so it reads here, the chairperson of the, uh, chairperson of the board of committees, so that's section eight under committees. And then it just says, the chairperson of the board of commissioners shall authorize, and with the majority approval of the board commissioners, create either su aponte or upon the majority approval of the board commissioners committees to assist the board of commissioners in the businesses, business affairs and oversight of authorities, housing authorities. Something similar to what Mr. Vixen was talking about, those subcommittees and different things like that. But we have one, two, three, four. We have five, six committees here, so we have the asset management, procurement, construction. And the responsibilities shall include, but not limited to, financial auditing, revenue stream analysis, human, urban development, funding, labor negotiations, asset management, and oversight of project construction. So for this committee here, I have, as the chair of this board, Mrs. Keating, Mrs. Virginia Keating. And please, at any point in time, if you say, hey, I'm not interested in that board, or I'm interested in that board, please let me know at any time. But Virginia Keating as the chair of that board.
And what board is this?
This is the asset management, procurement, and construction. We have Virginia Keating and then myself, I am on this board, and Mr. Vincent on that board. And then for the next one here, policy and personnel. Responsibilities shall include, but not limited to, personnel policy, development, review, and revisions, employee appraisals, recruitment. Also of this board, I have Ms. Virginia Keating as the chair of this board, and please let me know, like I said, if you have any objections or wanna change or alter anything. I have Virginia Keating as the chair of this board. I have vice chair McCormick on this board, and I have myself on this board. Okay. Resident initiatives and security. Responsibilities shall include, but not limited to, serving as a liaison to the authorities' tenants. Addressing such needs as environment, quality of life, and security, the committee will monitor and advise us as to the overall security of all authority properties and programs, and make recommendations for enhancements accordingly. As the chair of this board, I have Mr. Kenny Fly, Kenneth Fly, as the chair of this board. I have vice chair Rodney on this board as well. And then I have two names here, so I have Ms. Rayna and Ms. Bennet, and which, it's up to you, whichever one of you would like to be, sit on this board, please. Okay. So Ms. Rayna will sit on this board. So we have Kenny Fly, the chair, Rodney is on this board, and then Ms. Rayna will be on this board as well. Okay. And then we have the ethics review committee. Responsibilities include, but not limited to, the analysis of direct or actual conflicts of interest or the appearance of conflicts as per employees of the authority and tenants, and make recommendations addressing elimination of all conflicts. Of this board, I have Mr. Michael Vincent as the chair of this board. I have Ms. Bennet on this board as well. And lastly, myself, who is on this board. And then lastly, technology. Responsibilities include, but not limited to, oversight of the contractual services for automated systems by the authorities' consultant and vendor services, hardware and software management, and recommendations for employee and tenant automated services. And as for the chair of this board, I have Ms. Stacy Bennet. Is that okay?
No.
No, okay. So there's three. So there's Mr. Fly, there's Tulani, and there's Stacy that'll be on this board. And out of the three of you, which one would like to chair that?
I'd like to let Mr. Tulani chair it.
Okay. Ms. Tulani is the chairman, chairwoman of this board, technology. Very tech savvy. Ms. Bennet and Mr. Fly. And that concludes my committee assignments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you overlooked number four, the security.
That's what I said to you.
Nope. Commissioner Fly is the.
No, project development, partnership, and strategic planning. That's the one he missed. He skipped to resident initiative and security and gave Ms. Kenneth Fly, Rodney, and Ms. Rayna.
Oh, I misunderstood what he said. I was following the mistake and not the numbers.
Okay, so project development, partnership, strategic planning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so for this board here, I will have vice chair McCormick chair that board.
I would like to let Mr. Vincent do that one.
Mr. Vincent, are you interested in that board? That is the project development, partnership, strategic planning.
Sure.
So responsibilities shall include, but not limited to, the development of the five-year planning as required by HUD, and to incorporate community involvement in the reassessment and implementation of the authority's mission statement, and in the long range. and in the long-range planning. So, Mr. Vincent, you can chair that Board. Vice Chair will be on that Board as well as myself.
Can you provide clarification on the Resident Initiatives?
Yes, ma'am. So responsibilities shall include but not limited to serving as a liaison to the authority's tenants, addressing such needs as environment, quality of life, and security. The Committee will monitor and advise as to overall security of authority, properties and programs, and make recommendations for enhancements accordingly.
But who's the point? That's what I actually meant, who's appointed to that Board?
That Board, Mr. Fly is the Chairman of that Board. And we have Mr. McCormick on that Board as well as Ms. Raina.
Okay, that's the one I thought that...I misunderstood what you were saying, and I was following what you said on there, that's why I said no. So I don't mind you on that.
Yeah, that's the one I asked, and it was between you and Ms. Raina, and she...
Right, but I thought you were saying another Board.
Okay, so then...
It doesn't matter.
No, no, you were, you were saying Technology at that time.
That was the last Board I mentioned, Technology.
Yeah, okay.
So, okay, do we want to make changes, or are we...
No, please.
So then we're going to swap Ms. Raina from Resident Initiatives and Security.
I think there wasn't any spots on that one.
Yeah, Resident Initiatives and Security, I asked between Ms. Raina and Ms. Benning.
And you took...
And Ms. Raina said you'd like to be on the Resident Initiatives and Security. And Ms. Benning said she wouldn't, didn't want to.
I thought it was Chair of Technology.
That's, that was the last one.
Last one. On Resident Initiatives and Security.
You're Chair of Technology.
Right, and then I have Payne as Chair of...
Resident Initiatives and Security.
Yeah, and then there's Rodney and me.
Right, that's when I, that's when I asked between the two of you, and she said no, and then you said yes. So do you want to be on that Board now?
Technology.
No.
Yeah, I'll be on that one.
Okay, so are you okay being moved to or moved off of Resident Initiatives and Security?
I'd rather be on that one.
Do you rather be on that one?
You can be on it, I'll just stay on the one Board, on the Ethics.
Ethics?
Make it an alternate.
Make it an alternate, you want to be, so you want to be an alternate on the Resident Initiatives and Security?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'm just on the Ethics Board.
On the, we have you on the Ethics Board. And then what I will do...
Technology.
You're on Ethics and the Technology Board.
I, I, I think I'm not too sure about this, but four people is going. I have three people on it.
Yeah.
She doesn't show up, I'm assuming that you're...
That's exact.
Yeah.
If she's not able to be there, then, then I'll be the alternate.
So I have Ms. Benning.
Alternate for Technology.
You're the alternate, no, you're the alternate for Resident Initiatives and Security. I have you on Ethics and I have you on Technology, and then you'll be the alternate for Resident Initiatives and Security.
Right, so I'm the alternate to...
Resident Initiatives and Security.
These will be published, we will get hard copies.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just real quick, lastly, for the Project Development, once again, we have Mr. Vincent as the Chair. Mr. McCormick. And myself. Okay? And then she has those written up and she'll create, generate those hard copies for us, and they'll be posted. So at this time, is there any, any input with those, with those committees' assignments? Any questions?
I have a question.
If you got a question, I'm not in motion, so you go.
Okay, my, my question is a newbie question.
Go ahead.
Are these committees, we meet on our own, it's a non-forum, we can discuss anything, we can make decisions amongst ourselves, bring it back to the Board, and then the Board makes final...
Exactly.
We make recommendations, the Board makes decisions.
And so what, what I'll do, sorry, go ahead, Mrs. Keating.
Chair calls me.
Yeah, okay.
And so what I'll do is, I'll add you under the reports, under the New Business, you'll be a section of that, the Committee Reports.
All right, last thing I want to add to is these, is it mandatory that we meet at least once a month with these committees, or...
That's, per the bylaws, that's defined by, that's defined by you, please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, that's defined by you.
The head of the, yes.
Yep. And so that's Section 8 Committees in our bylaws.
So with that being said, I think I mean that being accepted, we accept all the meetings as discussed, I mean that being accepted. I think it has to be done.
That's it.
All right, motion and a second by Mr. Fly. All right, Paul, please.
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Raina, Virginia Keating, Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Benning.
Reluctantly, aye.
Okay, Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next line, please.
The next, under New Business is Board Identification, Employee Identification and Dress Code.
Okay, so just for clarification, Board Identification, Employee Identification. So Employee Identification and Dress Code are under the same thing, Employee Dress Code Identification, which there you have, not infringing on your day-to-day operations, do you already have dress code included in your policy personnel? Okay, so then...
But the personnel policy is getting updated.
It's updated.
It's getting...
Getting updated, okay.
All policies are getting updated.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clarification before we moved on. And with the Board Identification, one of the things, Vice Chair McCormick has some things on this as well, but like, you mentioned City Council, right? City Council has placards in front of there so that you can see. So that's one of the things that we want to bring up to the Board, placards sitting in front of us, who are we? Another thing with, which I'm sure will be in the employee handbook as well, name tags. You know, someone walks in, they don't know Ms. Tulani, or Tulani, or they don't know Ms. Hutton, there's no name tags, right? So which is that to them?
But we already have.
And they already have those, okay. And so those are some things we want to implement to be able to recognize who we are. And then another thing is the Board Identification, under Board Identification, badges for Commissioners. So when we're walking up to an individual, you know, we don't have anything, or a card. Like, we've been doing a lot of door-to-door with our community, within our community, MCHA, and we're like, okay, great, but how do they reach out to us, right? We need some sort of cards and things like that, so that's my, that's all I have on it. Anybody else guess?
The security side of this.
Yeah.
When we knock on doors of residents, they need to know that we're, we are who we are, and they're not being tricked.
Yeah.
I watched where property managers in the past, and I had a name tag on, no nothing. Older people are reluctant to let people in the door. If I was a citizen, I wouldn't invite anybody to the door. So that was, that is a must. We have to make sure the name tags are, they are wearing the name tags, ID, and we, as the Board Members, each one of us should have a badge, or whatever, how are we going to do this? And at the end of our term, we turn them back in, but we need to have that. In the past, the dress code wasn't so good in here. I come in here, I see our executive director wearing hoodies, blue jeans, I see sweatpants. I think our administration should be better than that. I knew it should be better than that. And, and that's where I came in with the idea of we need to have a dress code for, for the administration. I even thought about if they want to get polos or whatever, but I believe our executive director should dress like an executive director. It should show, you should, you should dress the part, the role that you're, you're in. It's imperative. We don't need people coming from off the street looking at us any other way. And that's where I'm at with that discussion. And I just think it's needed, and I'm going to move on that after everybody has a discussion, but that's where I'm at with that, thank you.
So far, the identification, I think that's, should be mandatory, and we was discussing that, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Hutton. We brought that up when the old Board was here, I don't know, it must have just went out the window, about getting us some identification cards or badges, so when we went up to residents' houses, well, we never just, never done it, huh? Yeah, but I think that's really, really necessary, especially somebody like me walking up, or rolling up somebody's house, you know. You know, I can be easily judged, like, how I'm supposed to be there, so that should be something mandatory to have.
Any other discussion? So with this, should we direct it to one of our newly formed, go ahead?
I, I believe that Ms. Hutton was giving information from me, and have you heard from the vendor about the badges?
Yeah, they, they did send me the link yesterday.
And I move that we keep this on the agenda, take it to our next meeting so that we can get discussion, get prices, and then we'll come up with a policy and whatever, and then let everybody have a chance to then move on that appropriately.
I think you ought to just move on this and then put as a stipulation in that motion that that should happen. So you can, you can pass this now.
Okay. I move that we accept that, I move that we accept this, ID, dress code, and employee identification. And so I did make sure that with the stipulations, after we hear from the executive director on the pricing, what needs to take place, and then make sure it's no conflict with the policy and procedure of the day-to-day operation.
So you're authorizing the Director to proceed in getting quotes, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it. Okay. Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Raina, Virginia Keating, Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Benning.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the, on the New Business is the 2021 Audit, which was given to the officials in that package. And this is the audit that was just recently done, we did get our audit in on time. And so once, everything is scored, we'll be looking for a score from HUD.
You said we did this timely?
Yes, we got it in, deadline was June 30th, and we got it in before the date.
Did you have any problems with what was done?
Um, we had a change in the original auditor for this retirement. And so we had to get a new auditor, and we did go out to bid, and the new auditor did it.
Who performed the audit?
Belma Butler and Company, they're from Chicago.
What's the name of the company yet?
Belma Butler, it's in your packet, and she had...
I see on page 43.
Thank you.
Okay, it shows the findings. And I would like you to address how you are going to, in future, get a better score on those deficiencies.
I don't have any deficiencies.
It says inter fund reimbursement significant deficiency.
Yes, that finding has already been cleared out.
Okay, where, where is that?
It's in the audit. Everything is closed, it's on the last page. If you read this toast, this was from the previous, and everything has been closed. That's what it did. So findings...
So page 42, prior, prior year findings. Inter fund reimbursement status closed. Page number 43, number two, balance sheet substantiation closed. And federal award findings in question, cost reporting 2020, 003 closed, page 44.
Well, congratulations, and I'm sorry I missed that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Keating.
Yes, thank you very much.
I have one question, on what is our current, what is our current score right now?
Right now, we only have one score, and that was in the last Board Packet, and we're at 33 right now. We only did the five, the physical.
What do we have to have to be out of the trouble status?
Sixty.
So I have a question on page 44, it says, under Section 5, federal award findings in question, cost, the reporting significant deficiency.
Right.
It stated that you did not follow the REAC line definition reporting guide.
No. It was, it was three, it was previous, that was the previous findings, those findings are now closed.
We...
The audit itself is closed. No, those findings are closed. That was on 2020 Audit. And when he did 2021, he has to close out the findings for 2020.
This is for, this is for 2021, correct?
Yes. But these findings were done under 2020.
Okay.
And so when you do, so I have the findings, when they do the next audit, that auditor has to either say the findings are still there, or he says we have fixed them, and they close them out.
If you hear me again, we're back at what Mrs. Keating was talking about earlier. It'll be nice to have the people that did the audit here, because like you said, we're in trouble status for a reason. And it'd be nice for us to ask these questions and not use interpretations that we may not, that I don't trust, so.
Okay.
I just wish that.
I can contact him and see if he can come next for me, and me with you.
Yeah.
And address this, so can we table this, or do it? I don't, I, I think there's too many, too many questions, and I'm looking at, there's three different things that are bad in there, according to this.
That's just under recording, because it's significant deficiency on the cover of the hands.
Yeah, and we need, I think we need to get that person there.
Yeah, so I think the question, personally for myself, you know, how, we have these findings, how did we get to having these findings? We, we got them for a reason, right? And then how did we remediate the situation to no longer have them, for them to be closed? So I do agree with that, have them here so we're able to ask questions, so.
Uh, I wonder, can we do this as a workshop instead of in a meeting?
Or move? Can we move on it? That would open up the schedule for the audit.
For the audit. So is that a motion, Mrs. Keating? You want to make a motion?
Yes, I have a motion.
And I second. Okay, and it doesn't take too long. Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Raina, Virginia Keating, Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Benning.
Aye.
And Michael Vincent.
Aye.
And, and the motion is, make sure, the motion is to do, this to be done at the whole workshop and get, answer all questions.
Right.
Thank you.
Without it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Director Hutton, on to the next line.
Lakeland Estates removal of the brush and panel.
All right. So on Sunday, I received a call, Commissioner McCormick received several calls, and then Commissioner Fly received several calls. The Lakeland Estates, they were out of power for two days. It's my understanding that before, previously, they've been out, they, they're not new to this, they've been out of, out of power for a week straight. Okay? Unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable. We are dealing with children, we are dealing with the elderly, we're dealing with people who need to be hooked up to electricity for medical reasons, that is unacceptable. I went out there on a Sunday, I was, I literally left church, church started at 11:00. I left at 11:05, and I was there at Lakeland Estates until 3:30 PM. And a great majority of that time was with Ms. Hutton, Director Hutton. The, there's one of the trees, so from the storms that hit, it knocked a limb on the high wire, NIPSCO's side of things, the high voltage. And it fried, you can see, it's still there, you can see how fried the tree is, or the limb is. And what happened, it streamed all the way down to the pole and blew the, the fuse, popped it, popped the fuse, making the electricity just gone for the, all 50, 50 units, all 50 units. We called NIPSCO, NIPSCO came out, they said, yeah, no, we, we see that, but we can't do anything because it's, it's personal property. So they came there, they left. Our people still without power. So it was, Marquis Electric, they came out, specifically Bruce, so Bruce is the man, Bruce Zimmerman, he installed one of the transformers about 30 years ago, so he's very familiar with our situation. But he said, the problem is, all... But he said, "The problem is, all around our perimeter, there's overgrown brush. So here's the fence line, and here's how much the brush is overgrown, all around our property." And even Nipco's gated-in section, all overgrown with brush and trees and limbs. And so, you know, we're talking about, we want to talk about vacancy rehabs, but none of that means absolutely nothing if there's no power to them. So like I said, it was completely unacceptable, and that's why this is here on the agenda. And we've gotta, we've gotta do something about it. And with that, I'm just gonna open the floor.
I went out to Lakeland Estates. I came home from Houston, went directly out there, and we, it's bad. We had squires in there. The good news is, the mayor of our city, Dwayne Perry, and special thank you to vector control and also Sean Smith. They were able to come out and clean up a lot of our, we're trying to regain our fence line. They did a lot of work today. I guess that's what partnerships are, and I'm glad that we have this partnership with the city. We have a lot of work to do. A lot of work on me. And I let everybody comment, but I can move that we have something, look for, call Tree Services so we can get these lines off.
Ask for bids.
Yes, ask for, I move.
I'd like to just make a comment.
Yes, sir.
This looks like, this is, this is part of PM, or property management. This is nothing that we need to look for bids. This is not a high-dollar item, or should not be a high-dollar item that would open us up for bids if it was being maintained. The property manager should see this encroachment of the fence line, trim is needed. If it does get hairy, if we do have to call out an electrician on a Sunday, we should have the phone number of electrician. And I've worked with Nipco many times, they can be less than cooperative. We have to have an electrician on staff or on call that can't address those issues with high power, and there's not a lot of them. Marquesa is one of them.
Yeah.
They need to be at the ready for a phone call. Our property manager, if this is an issue, and this is a cost that's gonna cost the board to have to react, then something has to be said to the current property manager. Questions have to be asked, and is this the right property manager for us moving forward?
Yeah, I agree with you, well, Harley, Andy, is it Skia?
Andy Skia.
I personally called him because I knew him from the King Center, and he was awesome. He jumped right in, and he didn't charge us a dime, and he said, "Anything you need from us to help him," but he doesn't work on high voltage.
Right.
They're clear, there's not too many companies.
People die like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can't just have.
But I just want to say, Mr. Vincent, without going, the last administration was mad at it, and we, that's why we're here today to address that. And when we have these committees, we need to get right into it and find out a lot of property managers, a lot of this to go on and on. There are some ideas that's on the table that's gonna happen. He's gonna start making our report. We also want to have a maintenance person come in and make it, they need to be here. So when you don't have, we can't have some persons of those people that are not here. And I took a tour of the maintenance department.
Right.
And this is what y'all, everyone know here, there's no secret. There's only two people. So our priority is, we need to try to find, the head maintenance, we need to do evaluation of the maintenance of everybody here. This is our, we are here now. We gotta do the right thing for the people. I think that it's gonna be a little, I think it's gonna be a little costly to, we have a lot, we have a lot of limbs to cut. We have a lot of limbs that's laying on roofs. And so I think that, I think that the motion is to, I think it's appropriate for, for open up bids, call, get some bids.
Why don't you add to the motion, rather than add some success? We ask the director to go out for bids. The bids are presented to the president at the date that they're due. Okay? The president will open them in public at the public meeting, and then we will discuss and vote at that. And I think.
So you seconding with those stipulations?
That's exactly right, yes. And bids should be handled in this way for every bid that we go out for, including this one for the attorney.
I have an addition to that.
Go ahead.
Being that we were already out of power for, so is this an emergency bid situation? Do we want to wait another month for bids to come in, and then another month to accept the bids?
I just want to add, I'm gonna let Ms. Hutton speak on this, because there was, one of the obvious things was, we had, they lost all the food. So Ms. Hutton, if you can bring the board up to speed and the public on what's been done to replace that food and must want.
All right. The power was out because the transformer of Nipco's transformer was out.
Nip, sorry.
How? From the tree room.
Right.
During the storm. And Nipco did come, well, it was about 4:30 and 5 o'clock.
Yeah.
When they came and put it back on. And me having an electrician, they would not, they cannot mess with Nipco's pump. This was my first outage that I've encountered here. And what we did, me and Mr. Patrick, we went door to door, and we knocked on doors to make sure people were safe. We had one lady had a heart monitor machine. My truck, I plugged it in my truck to get her monitoring machine done. We ended up putting three families in the hotel. They stayed in the hotel, and two of the families stayed the next day. I did come in, I made a letter for Nipco asking for the emergency food stamps for the residents, and the residents that wanted to come and get them, because some people said they took their food somewhere else, but some people did lose. And I wrote that out, and they'd be receiving their food stamps. We also had the pantry, and they delivered this week. And so I've been giving, if you look around the room, the boxes out, to the families also, as well as giving them the letter.
Well, I commend you. You have done quite well.
Yeah. And, and one of those reasons, you know, you think about a power outage in your own home, right? But now, you, we have a responsibility to how many souls, to ensure that if something happens like this, we get it taken care of. And when they told me that before, it was a week, that hurt my heart. And so I said, "Listen, we did that well in this check. We need to go to every single door. If there's a car outside, and we're knocking on the door, and there's no answer, we go in, and we ensure that our people are okay." That's why it is imperative, it is an emergency. And I think we make, I think we should make that stipulation, that we get this done. Because we can beautify this all up, but if we don't deal with that, this all means absolutely nothing.
Okay, we add, there's a motion and a second.
Right, go get that motion.
We need to get through that.
So.
All right.
And we already have.
I'm gonna hold my comment, let us get through this motion and get it passed.
The motion is for.
We adding this, it's emergency, we need to, we need to perform it as soon as possible.
Okay. Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tiana, Talani Reyna. Virginia Keating. Kenneth Fly.
Yes.
Stacy Benny. Michael Vincent.
Aye.
A quick question before we go on to the line item, I want that to get passed real fast. I do think it's imperative, what Ms. McCormick said about having our maintenance people come here and give us reports and letting us get updates. But also, what happened to our section eight lady, and you know, I see, I don't see Curtis here sometimes, when they used to have to be mandated, or I don't know if they was coming on their own will, to come to our board meeting so we can question them about what's going on with their program and what they oversee. We haven't been privy to be able to bring any attention to them. It's like they've been going under the radar for the last six, seven months.
We are, we taking care of that in the next couple agendas. It will be done.
Okay.
Just so everyone, that will be done. All the properties will have to report. We in trouble status.
Right, right.
And make no mistake about it. And we have to act like it. We can't keep hiding people and don't come here and don't show up.
Right.
Can Ms. Hutton answer the question? Can you answer the question?
Yeah, I was answering, oh, answer my question she was asking.
As far as the staff.
Yes.
He said at one point in time in the past, some of your staff were present, and he didn't know if they were mandatory or if they just came and appeared.
Since I've been here, I continue to let the staff work. And the only person that comes is me and finance.
Yeah, there's Dunji's over here.
With that being said, I move right now, I move that all hit property heads show up at half, come to our meetings.
I second. Yeah, I second, because there's questions I need to have answered by, by them specifically.
We want to report, we want to do a fifth.
The recording's in the board's packet.
The director is day-to-day responsible, everything that happens in this body. She should be able to answer all of those questions. I think it's improper to drag people whose job it is to do the things that they do as far as tenants go into meetings. Now, that's my personal opinion. I, you know, it's up to the board. But I think that if we find that we are unable to get the information, or there's information that we cannot get for some other reason from the director, then we'll go a step ahead. But I think that she's responsible, okay, for everybody and everything they do. And I think that's the only way to handle it.
If I may address you, Ms. Keating, what you just said, I agree with you to an extent. We are in trouble status, zero threshold. We have to. I, right at this second, I don't have confidence in the executive director. We're willing to work together to move forward, to try and make this work. But in the meantime, I think that we need to make sure those people come here. And I don't want to talk in public about what the maintenance side of this. We have issues, and we need to make sure those people come here. And I want to just say, this is my first day at, being back in October. I, no, it was before I got put on this board. I heard Mr. Malone say this, "From this moment forward, departments need to be here." I think Clem came one knee, and then I think that's something to address from Ms. Hutton. But more importantly, right now, I don't want our react score to go down. I want to hear from them why things are not being done. They're accustomed to telling people certain, you can fix your mouth and say anything. But while we have you here, we can get you on the minutes, we can get those people here. If Ms. Hutton can answer those questions, we can go right out. So I just, for right now, not coming.
Let me just articulate my reasoning. And I can understand what you're saying, okay? I don't say that you're wrong.
Yes.
But if you look at this book here, okay, one of the points it makes is we are not micro-managed, okay? And I think that it's a slippery slope. And I think that we have to hold our director responsible, okay? She's responsible for what those people do. I don't mean this in a negative way, but she is responsible. And I think that's just.
Ms. Keating, not to interrupt you so heartily, but there's some things that the director is not gonna know. You know, she might know the bulk of the main things like that, but there's intermediate things in between that, that only the people that's in here to them programs that knows. Because I know if I asked a couple of things that I want to ask concerning that section eight stuff, Ms. Hutton, no, no.
Well, then you need to, you need to put the question to her and tell her, "You need to find this out for me."
Oh.
Okay? And do it with the question. You know, you guys can both.
Right, right. No, you're good, good input. Good input. Keep on, keep doing it.
But I'm, 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 I'm listening to Mr. Fly. We was here. We went through all the bays, and it was, it was hurtful to, the stuff that we had to put up with. And, and I've already had a problem with maintenance, so I just wanna, I just.
Well, I think that, I think that maintenance is critical. I would agree with you on that, from my previous experience. Because I remember how many hundreds of work orders there were. And so I would say that that would be an exception.
May I ask a question, Ms. Hutton? Do you feel comfortable answering questions?
Yes.
Can you answer all our questions?
I don't know what the question is.
Okay, let me ask you one question. Why haven't you known maintenance taking place in Lakeland Estates? The overgrowth, this didn't happen in four years. It's been like that for quite a while. It was so bad that a person made a home.
Yeah.
Out of, out of the trees and the bushes, they made, it was flooding out there. They made a whole little house, a whole little setup out there. So how, and how can you not on a day-to-day basis see that?
I've been out there, and it wasn't like that all the time. But with the excessive rain and stuff, the plants do grow. And when I was made aware, we are working toward getting it done.
I just see a team, I just want to be a team effort.
Yeah.
And I don't like to be, I don't like to be, I don't like to hear an excuse that's not even a good excuse. Right now, that is totally gross negligence that I seen and I witnessed in Lakeland Estates. I've been reporting on it to this board for over four years. That's why the mayor brought me in here. We have to, we have to do better. But I don't think you are equipped to answer everybody's questions. But I agree with Ms. Keating, it's your responsibility to be honest with you. And it's not looking good right now. But I'm not here to, I just want, I want to get that done, Ms. Hutton.
Just keep it moving, Nate. I'm gonna slip in with you one fast time. On the section eight side with the house, that program, we have to make sure the tenant, the landlord, and the program director, they gotta get better relations. I'm not gonna be specific about what was making me say this, but I do have recordings of hearing correspondence between the director to that tenant. And it was, it was degrading, you know?
We have a section eight manager now.
Well, yeah, that's what I meant to say, Kathy, you know, it was degrading the way she spoke to her. I've been listening right on, she recorded it. And so, but either way, that's why I'm really kind of being specific about that issue. But we can move on though.
I have a question from a sudden. Who's the current property manager?
His name is Curtis Lewis.
Curtis Lewis.
He manages what?
He manages public housing property.
All of your, all of the properties?
Yeah.
Here, Lakeland Estates?
Yes.
Okay, by the next meeting, can you tell us if that's too much of a task for one person? Can you give us an answer by the next meeting, please? Do you understand what I'm asking? I need to make sure that one, can one person manage all of this and make monthly reports?
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm in previous with, with everyone here.
Well.
Somebody dropping a ball.
Right now, Curtis is not a full-time manager here.
He's not a full-time manager?
No. We have, we have published for full-time managers, but I haven't gotten any news from.
So I have a question. So are we paying Curtis a full-time salary to be?
No.
What's his last name?
Lewis.
Ms. Lewis, Mr. Lewis.
Are we paying Mr. Lewis a full-time salary to be a part-time?
No, he's getting part-time. He get paid.
So is the attitude, um, part-time, so that's why I only give part-time work? Or what?
I move that we make sure Mr. Curtis is at our next meeting, present, to answer our questions.
I second.
Can you call the rule?
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Talani Reyna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Aye, considering, I wish you would have added up section eight property manager.
There's another motion that we overlooked. I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Stacy Benny. Michael Vincent.
Aye.
And from this moment forward, forgive me, I was, when we had motions on the floor, we already had a second, we started, we need to get through that first. We stopped at you on the last motion. So we ask that, for the first motion that I made, not just to have a maintenance person here, but also to have our section eight manager, director, present at the next meeting also.
I second. Oh, it's already a second, we both.
I'm adding that to that, so, can we reopen it, the floor office?
Nathan Patrick. Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
And Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Can you give us the name of the Section 8 manager?
Kathy Howe.
Could you spell that, please?
This is Kathy Howe.
Okay, if there is nothing else, we are going to move on. We are under reports. Director Hudson?
Finance report.
Hello, my name is Flannan Dungy, I am the finance manager. Um, you all may not have got a chance to look at the finance report. I got it in at the last moment, I do apologize. I just came off of, uh, leave, so I kind of got this together, uh, pretty quickly. But I'll go over it, if you have any questions, feel free to ask anything that, um, you need. So the first section for the expenses, it says Section 8 public housing. These are the expenses that we pay out. The half is like the Section 8 rents that are paid out. Port in, those are the portable tenants who poured in from other agencies, UAP is utility checks paid out to the Section 8 tenants. FSS is the family self-sufficiency program. Port out is our tenants that are poured out to other agencies. And then the homeownership UAP and public housing UAP, those are also utility checks paid, paid out to our tenants on those programs.
Question.
Yes.
How many people was poured in to our, to our port in?
I don't know the answer to that question, that would be a question to ask Ms. Howe.
And the port out is the same, correct?
Uh, port in is a person who poured here from another.
Do you have your same response?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, I don't know those numbers.
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
I had a question for you. And just for the record, for it to be on, uh, on the record, the homeownership, uh, program is currently closed right now, right?
I'm sorry, I don't want to answer that question either.
Are you making a report?
He's already filing, this is filed.
Okay, okay.
On the next page for the revenue, these are the, um, payments received versus the payments owed. So, and these are for rent for just the month of, uh, June, 2022. So for public housing, we were to receive the $39,586, and we received $33,344, and so on down the list for each individual, uh, development. Um, and I have percentages over here just saying we got 80%, 84% of what we were supposed to receive from public housing, 106% of what we were supposed to receive from NCHGI. And, um, the business activity one, I'm sorry, I do see a. If you guys will give me one moment to go check, I want to make sure that that is correct, that 526%. It could be, I know we've still been getting in, um, payments from the rental assistance program, but, um, I want to go make sure that that's actually correct, everything.
Take your time.
Okay, give me one moment.
While she's gone, I'd like to address the board if I may, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that we, we halt all addictions until our, to our new attorney come in. All addictions are stopped until our new, uh, to our new, to our new attorney.
I second that, there's a lot been going on. Probably new board members wouldn't be privy of it, of the exact issues that's been going on with that, but it would be wise that we halt them and, uh, wait till attorney give us proper, um, you know, uh, leadership on that and guidance on what's going on with that. So I second that, okay.
Director Hudson on the call?
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
I'd like to piggyback on that and say that any outstanding, um, addictions need to be, uh, turned over by our previous attorney and given to our new attorney too.
Yeah, he did, he did say that he will do.
He would, he said.
Yeah, in his resignation.
Oh, sure.
Well, he could just simply drop it off here and it would be given to the.
So, Ms. Hudson, if you can, make sure that everything that he has, it needs to be turned over to you so we just go, we don't have to deal with Mr. Freeman and Associates. Do we need to move on and make a motion, or are the?
He has been writing already.
Yeah, we had, it's, uh, I just wanted to.
I'm trying to, the process is what's going on.
Okay, just make sure that everything that he has, um, including all, any, any emails that was generated, any emails that were generated, everything we needed turned over to you, so we give it to our next attorney. And anything inappropriate, then our attorney will deal with that.
All right. So, um, we can move on and tell, and then we'll pick this back up once Ms. Dungy comes back. Um, we're going to move on to the director's report.
Okay.
I apologize, that number is correct.
And then I have a question for you, Ms. Dungy. So with the overages and percentages, would that be, um, payments from, um, back fees?
That usually is people paying tax to rent.
Tax to rent, okay. And with the business activity, what are they, what is, what does that entail? What are they paying us? Business activity, what does that mean?
Business activity is, uh, non-for-profit that has market rate and Section 8 is home that we own.
So.
Where the landlord.
Where the landlord, so they're paying us.
Yeah.
And 526% is that from?
Those are back rent payers.
Yeah.
And how far does the back rent go?
Uh, they can go back four years, but they, the agency only pays 18 months of back rent.
Eight-four. Okay. All right, that's all.
It, it's just, I mean, I hate interrupting like this, but that, even with that back rent four years ago, that's strenuous, a lot went on back then, and something that ain't prominent to be.
I agree with you, and I, I want to say something. I need to re-apply our attorney.
I got you, I got you, right.
This does affect, I believe it will affect our, our REAT score. Yeah. We don't want to grant, but we want to do the right thing. So if going down, doing the right thing means we go down then, I guess we will be going down then. But we need to do the right thing no matter what's in that state.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the, 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 the.
Second.
Um, one moment, one moment. Were you still going?
A little bit.
She's still going.
Oh. Give us.
Um, just the final page, um, I usually, um, in this section here, I usually have the expenses, um, for the vendor payout for all programs that I just put fee attached for this last page. These are all the, um, vendor expenses for all the programs. Everything combined, um, for all of the programs. Um, the total for this month was $240,011.50 for June, I, I'm sorry, not this month, June.
I, I just have one question for you. Is, is he giving, it stops me every time I see this. Why is the Comcast bill $821? And then we have another Comcast that's $333.30.
That's on there twice because it's all, it's all the programs. And I just got back yesterday, I only been here two hours, and today I've only been here an hour, I was going to leave for several months, so I didn't have time to get the report together how I normally would, so I do apologize for it being in short disre. I normally would have added those two numbers together because they're from, you know, two different programs. Um, but the Comcast bill is, for one, it's for all of our developments, all of our buildings, um, as well as it's for several months. We can't, we have your own.
Yes, I understand. So, so what services are we providing? What services are we giving for Comcast right now?
Uh, we have the, um, internet for all of the developments. Um, I believe there's cable for the, we have little TVs like that, in like the laundry room, I believe there's a basic cable package for that, some of the phones, I do believe. Um, I would have to look at the bill to give.
Okay, can you please, let me know, like, what exactly we're getting from? Now, a question from your side. Um, why, why can't we make sure that the residents, everybody have, why, why can't everybody have it? If we pay the bill.
We paying enough for it.
Why, why we can't make sure all the residents receive internet? That's the question I want to ask you.
You talking about in their units?
Yes.
That's not hard.
There is a program that, uh, we can look into, uh, with Comcast to see about getting that.
Would you please check into that ASAP? I, I'd like to know, I think it'd be, uh, we doing a service for these, these residents put up with enough, and I believe that we can make sure that they have internet.
And, and I'd like to add to that, not just that, you know, they have kids that have to do e-learning.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? So if on a county level, we have a commissioner worrying about broadband for rural parts of the county, we need to be looking at internet for our inner city.
Inner cities, housing and stuff.
I agree with that.
Anybody else have discussion on internet?
Good, good point, Rodney.
So.
So we need to know our answer on that for next, we need to know what it's going to take to make sure everybody has internet. I don't think it's that much.
It sure ain't, because there were one, um, some services, we all live in a group there, it would, it would cover the whole, you know.
Honestly, everyone have internet, you mean the individual Section 8 units as well, or just?
I wasn't including Section 8. Including Section 8 too? Oh, yeah, why would you leave them out? You're right.
Well, with the Section 8 units, those are.
No, that's, that's our name for us.
That's why I'm not asking, yeah.
Yeah, just our.
Yeah, that's what I was, just our, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Vincent. It's like a voucher program.
A voucher program. Fair percentage of your rent.
We don't maintain. But we, we stipulate to that landlord what we require.
Yeah.
Them to provide our residents.
Right.
So Wi-Fi could be part of that.
Well, right now, we ain't got a good relationship with landlords, it's already kind of strenuous on that.
You know what to do with that?
Yeah, that's why I wanted to bring that up, to have the housing manager come in here.
No, if we don't have a good relationship with a landlord, we need to find another landlord.
No, we need to, it's not on the landlord's account. That's why I'm saying we need to examine and get more conversation with the housing, Section 8 housing authority manager. It's not on the account of the landlord, just a sec, right? It's not on the account of the landlord. See what I mean? It's on the account of us. And we see a lot of landlords, landlords are steering away from Section 8 and even trying to help provide their homes to us because of who, who's running it.
That's a good, I agree.
But I'm just putting it out there, quick question for him right quick.
But your question should be directed to, I believe, now, no disrespect, I believe the question should be directed to Ms. Hudson, because she's, she's run this show. She's the one that can answer all the questions that we're asking right now. And Ms. Keating pointed that out, she, she does, and she should, so that's a great question. I'd like to hear from her what you just asked. We're talking, we're talking about internet service on the buildings that, that we, we have at, at our disposal. Section 8 is something different, it's a building that we are.
We don't, we don't own Section 8.
We don't own the building, but we do, we do have, say, over a contract or.
We have, the Section 8 contract is federally regulated, and it has the different stipulations that go with Section 8. We don't have anything to do, we cannot enforce or infringe anything on a landlord. We can ask.
So just, just hypothetically, the ridiculous, if we have a landlord that comes in and says we're Section 8, but we're not going to provide water for anybody, can we say, oh, well, sorry, we don't, that's okay then, go ahead. There's, there's basic life needs that we have to make sure that these landlords are supplying to our people. And it's beginning, it's, it's beginning to be the basic life needs is internet connection.
But again, there is a regulation, and there's certain things we can ask, but we cannot mandate. And that's what I'm trying to get across to you. We cannot mandate, we can ask.
But it's up to the inspection of.
True.
The, you know, building.
But we cannot mandate.
So maybe we can start initially with, and we go back to what we said, um, just the units, trying to check into seeing if we can secure Comcast for internet.
The public housing.
Yes.
Control what we have control of.
Yes, that's right.
And there's nothing wrong with asking.
No.
Right.
Number two, you have a problem, do you not, with getting landlords?
No, lately we've been getting.
Have you?
Lately, we have been getting new landlords. I'm, I'm glad to say lately we have. We have been getting new.
Because of the, uh, increase in rental, uh, a lot of landlords had not wanted the rent under these circumstances. Because they got as much as they could if they went.
We, we were able, HUD gave us, and we were able to increase our payments, and so we are getting more landlords.
We did have, we did hand us out the old board, a pack, a sheet showing, um, the increase, uh, like one bedroom is X, two bedroom. Can we make sure the new board receives that also?
Yes, I would. Okay, but, uh, that will only be until October, because October, it will change.
Okay, and then that's when we would get another update.
Yes.
So closing conversation on that and moving on.
With, um, the motion on the, and a second on the, the Comcast report.
The financial report.
Yes, she's doing it.
Yes.
I'm done.
Okay. Director Hudson, please, on the roll.
Nathan Patrick.
Aye.
Rodney McCormick.
I'm looking at something. Why are we paying Freeman Associates $12,000? Forgive me, y'all. Are we paying Freeman Associates $12,459 when they were never our attorney? I'm going to object to that, I just want to make sure we have a record of that. The, um, Mr. Freeman turned his bid back in late. Pursuant to federal guidelines, uh, Mr. Freeman's bid should have been denied. I also think that it needs to be a report made to the OIG. I, I want to wait to our attorney, but I don't think we should be paying Mr. Freeman nothing until our attorney, until we have your attorney. This is something that I don't think we should be coming out of our pocket. Uh, I'm upset with it, I was, I was, I digress, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, the soul just don't settle well with me on that, and forgive me, I just don't think we should be paying him. And I just want to.
For the record, these payments have already been made, this is June, um, this is month in June.
Yeah, I said I digress.
All, all these payments have already been.
Then it was also approved already by HUD because we had zero pressure.
Right, HUD approved all these payments.
Over $1, $1 or more must be approved by HUD, and that's another problem that I have. Just, I, okay, I'm just.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nick. So we have approved our finance report?
We, we, we on the roll call.
Okay, that's an aye for, by you.
Tulani Rayna.
Aye.
Virginia Keating.
Aye.
Kenneth Fly.
Me.
Stacy Bennet.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
And that's it.
Okay.
And, um, for the record, that is more than one bill, that's not.
I understand what you're saying. He's not, he wasn't our attorney lately, and that's his point blank. And for him to be an officer of the court, I'm getting a little emotional here, forgive And for him to be an officer of the court, I'm getting a little emotional here, forgive me, it just, I just want to move on right now, I can hold on until we get to a time.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to, well, he's not here, but we were given a packet of information from the TA.
Yes.
And who is our TA?
We have a director's report?
Yeah, I'm just gonna.
Oh, director's report, sorry, I'm jumping the gun, as I was. Director's report.
Okay, like I stated earlier, everyone is aware of the outage we had at Lake Glenville, my first one here. We also had a fire on July 4th, here at the Boulevard. The resident left his apartment and left something cooking, and it was a kitchen fire. I can't at this time tell you how much damage it is because the adjuster hasn't sent the paid for work back, but I am making sure everyone is notified that we did. I did relocate the resident to another unit, and at this time, I have turned everything to insurance, and I'm waiting on it. I have the fire report, but I'm waiting on the insurance.
So any small damage down to any other apartments?
No, no, it was just a down. Also, I'm going to bring to the board's attention, I'll also be looking for a new finance director. Ms. Dungy has given her two weeks' notice. I wish her well in February, and thank her for anything she's done.
I thank you all for having me, I have thoroughly enjoyed working here. I had a baby, and.
Congratulations.
Thank you for COVID and everything, I just don't feel like I can be the asset that the agency needs, I can't be in the office how you all need me to be, so to do myself a favor and to make sure you all get the attention you deserve as a finance manager, I need to step down.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us a shot.
I would like to add that Ms. Dungy has been consistent during this entire process. We were just talking about reports of the other departments, she has been here, she's been through here through it all, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm sorry to go, but, you know, maybe later.
Could I ask you a question? As far as hiring someone else, would they need to be trained by you?
I wouldn't say they necessarily need to be trained by me, no, I do believe Ms. Hudson, and I'm not sure, I've been gone for three months, so I'm not sure if Chris is still helping out, but, and my staff is pretty knowledgeable, so I don't think they necessarily need to be trained by me personally, no.
All right, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome. I do plan to leave, you know, stuff behind notes and things to where they can catch them.
The TA is going to come in and assist, his name is Ron Erger, whoever the new finance person is, to make sure they know what needs to be done.
Do you judge this, do we judge this?
The TA has just came aboard.
Because this is the first report?
Yes.
The reason I ask is because this is a bit more than we could read before the meeting.
Yes.
I mean, suggesting that you have to do this, so you get a chance to.
This report, yes, this report, right, for Ms. Keating, taking this report, I have the present.
Yes, I make a motion.
I second.
About this demotion?
I think she can still give her report.
And I just, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but, you know, I gotta say it.
When it's fresh.
It was all in my mind, too.
Right now, that's the end of my report right now.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, so your report's done, so now for the TA's report, the motion and the second is to table it.
Okay.
And so you can call the roll.
I have a question from this side of our report.
Okay, go ahead.
You do work for us, correct?
Yes.
You work for this board?
Yes, I do.
You don't work for HUD. You work for this board?
I work for this board.
Yes.
But I follow the guidelines of HUD.
Okay.
Yes.
You need to follow our guidelines. On the last meeting that we had, and I want, please forgive me, I don't want to sound like I just don't know another way to say this, we voted to reopen the bidding process for our economy. It is hard to conduct this business without an attorney. You took it upon yourself to reach out and bring up HUD to us, I think it was Mr. Bruce, I'm not for sure, who you brought up telling us some guidelines. That didn't have nothing to do with us starting the procedure and the process of getting bids. We all voted on that. HUD doesn't run this board, they can't make no selection on this board. They provide us our finance, our grant, basically. We just need you to follow our direction so we can feel better with what we're doing here. Because if you don't follow our direction, and our direction does not get to me yet, or is it the other word, you're not here. Whatever, we have to do better with one another. We have to be able, one of the things on our handle, we must have a working relationship, we must be able to trust our executive director to follow, to follow that. So with that being said, I hope that you realize that whenever we ask something to be done, that we expect it to be done, and not, and not go behind us to ask.
Not going behind you, we're on a zero threshold, and according to the documents in the zero threshold, anything that I put out, I have to have approved by HUD.
It's not an expenditure until we vote on it, and then it becomes an expenditure and it has to be approved by HUD. I understand zero threshold, the, asking for a bid and a proposal is not an expenditure.
Right.
It was our request for you to do that, and it should have, I'm not going to go back and forth, it should have just been done, and it's wrong, please, let's not do this, let's not start off on this note, let's just make sure we get it done, thank you.
Okay, let's move on, TA's report, we have a motion and a second on the floor to table it until the TA is able to be here himself.
I agree. Rodney McCormick, Talani Reyna, Virginia Keating, Kenneth Fly.
Yeah.
Stacy Vinnie, Michael Vincent.
Aye.
All right, and we do have requests for proposals right here, moving on, MCHA Attorney's Report is open, we have our request for proposals here in front of us. Request for proposal issued July 29th, 2022, that is tomorrow. Proposal due August 22nd, 2022. Director Hudson, do you have anything to add? Can you point us into any specific directions? The board, do you have any questions for Director Hudson on this request for proposal? Anything that we need to be aware of?
Not really, we can take a look at the scoring, the scoring total is 115.
That they must have?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the total score.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Keating?
I just want to confirm the procedure in receiving bids again, okay, so that we're all on the same page. I understand that we didn't do it the same way as, I have done it in the past. Are you going to receive bids, bring them to the president, who will open them, have an open meeting? Are you going to do that, okay? And at that point, President Orchard, are you going to assign it to a committee to book out? And determine what recommendation, when they come back and do that?
Yes, ma'am, it will actually go to the procurement and the procurement committee, which is asset management, procurement, construction, it will go to that committee.
Perfect, okay, a best procedure for any bids, quotes, or anything of that.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need.
Chairman, are we in other business?
Yes.
Or not yet?
Yeah, if that is, if there, we are now in other business, there are no other business.
I want to bring.
Okay, go right in. Or do you want to bring it under Commissioner Comment?
You can go.
Okay, so there's no other business, so now we're moving on to Commissioner's Comments.
We got public comments.
Public?
Do we even have, do we have a section for Commissioner's Comments?
I should say it under the other.
We haven't put it in yet.
We haven't put it? Okay.
We have to make sure that that's in our approach, like that, Commissioner Comments, we add to that.
You want it after the public, right?
Yeah. A, B, C, D, okay.
Ms. Keating.
Okay, so, any public comments? Any public here, Commissioner Comments?
Okay. Uh, yes, uh-oh, come on, big Kevin, let's get it. No, I just, I don't get laid, something like, going long. Yeah. I live over about 40 feet away, been here about 10 years, and seen a lot of the kind of goings and whatnot, but I do like to make up this board.
Should we put the camera too?
If you want, I mean.
The man, we have the camera.
I can't, I can't see with. But I'd just like to say that I like to make up the board, and I think going into a nice direction here, I'm acquainted with four members of it, so I think you guys have a lot of, my interest in it at heart. I particularly like the idea of maybe getting some wifi here. I've been advocating for that since 2015, and I've always got the response, well, a lot of people don't know how to use computers, what that got to do with it, you know? Between that and also being able to attract the account activity online, come on now, this is 2022, we still putting a check in the slot to pay, you don't know the rest of the process. I'm getting statements about what money I owe, I don't know, I stay on top of my accounts, all right? And so I just want to make sure that hopefully we're moving in that direction.
Ms., Jim, can I ask you, are you guys receiving receipts now?
Every so often, we'll get a statement about you, it's not a regular thing.
Right, but when you pay your rent, you don't be sent a receipt of that month that you paid your rent?
On the statement, it shows the money order and the receipt, and when you paid it, at the bottom of the statements, in the month.
Oh, all the months within that statement?
Yeah, it's three, it gives you three, your last three months.
Okay, so they get them statements every three months?
No, no, you get it every month, but it has on the bottom the last three months.
But it don't have all of your receipts from that?
No, each month, like if, I get, today is July, September, July will show me May, June, July.
Right.
Point of work, we need to let the public finish his comment.
Yeah, yeah, I was just asking him a question, and I wanted to know that, because I think we should make sure that they receive receipts, so they can come in and prove that they have paid their rent, because I am also a tenant also, so I've been through that issue, I want to see if we changed that yet.
And I'm really, the fact that I'm probably the person probably paying the most of this property because of my income. This has jumped $30 the last two years now, and I imagine it's going to happen again because I got a little bit of increase to my salary, and I look forward to that. But it'd be nice to be able to have something. The wifi would really help me out, because I was still a stoner, I'm everywhere else to do my business for the most part, and if I could get wifi cable and have a way doing things online, I mean, it would help me out tremendously.
The online is coming.
Okay, I, whenever it comes here, I'm welcome, right now, it's something that's been going on a couple of years now, so we'll see, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kevin, how long have you been living out here?
I've been here 10 years, maybe 10 years in October.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, I've seen a lot of the kind of goings.
All right, you've seen a lot?
Yeah.
All right, good and bad.
Yeah, but like I say, I like to make up this board, pretty good board, I covered a lot of these meetings, and I think you guys have really conducted business the way it's supposed to be. You know, there's a lot of posture going on with the other boards, I think you guys got a good idea what you have to do, and how that should get done. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we're now on Commissioner Comments.
I'd like to start off, since I've kind of asked about it. Are you aware, Ms. Hudson, how's the bedbug issue coming along out here? Because I'm pretty sure it's not relieved, because those are almost impossible to get relieved totally. But is there a day or something, you have been having any reports or issues about this strenuous bedbug issue down here in Boulevard Garden?
Yeah, we've been addressing it when the residents reported that they had bedbugs, and when they come in, they do the, we have them do the, if it's a certain building, they do check all the apartments, and then whatever apartment, as if it's safe, they treat that part, but they do a check first.
Right, would you say within the last, say, five months, have it been less calls or more calls, or kind of on the same?
No, it has decreased, when I got here, it was a lot of calls, and we made, some of the residents, they had continuous company, and that added to it, and so some of the residents have cut down on their company, and they have gotten rid of the furniture or whatever that had been, if it's stated, that happened there.
Okay, one last, one last issue I want to ask you. I noticed that on the sidewalks, and even coming up on the sidewalks, it's been kind of made a little accessible for the handicap, you guys made it like smoothed off so that you get up with a wheelchair, and even on the sidewalks where it was big humps, they smoothed it out. And so on the issue of the handicap, are we going to do anything or trying to do anything for inside the homes for the handicap? You know, I don't think no building out here is handicap accessible at all. Are we, are we thinking about accommodating the handicapped elderly, considering that they are handicapped nationally?
We do have some handicap accessible buildings, they're normally the quiet.
What substitute handicap and substitute?
We lower the cabinets where needed, and the doors are wide.
The restroom?
Yeah. The, it's a.
I mean, the restroom have railings around there, because you know how I felt a few times and cracked myself down a few times, it's handicap railing around the toilets now?
Not around the toilets, it's railings in the shack.
Yeah, I know those in the shower, but, you know, we get on the toilet, off the toilet, someone that's disabled have to have.
Normally, only if they request it, then we, you know, give them a help.
Okay, and the end of my Commissioner's comment, you was all tagged in the email that I sent out, and at that time, well, Nathan, Board Chairman, he addressed it that way in the beginning of the meetings, and I accept the apology, I will say that I have felt some type of way, and ultimately now, I have let it go past me, and I'm over it, I'm totally with trying to help this board continue on in the right way, I don't have any more hard feelings, Mr. Patrick, and I'm just here for the long haul until, until I leave, or we stay forever, however, so blessings to all of you guys, and let's keep trying to do the best we can.
I just want to, want to comment, we have a lot of matters that we asked to be tabled, and I see that some of those things at this meeting were on the agenda. I suggest that maybe we do something like this, this is from the board of works, it's a pending items list, and what it does is it keeps a record of everything that we've told the director we want her to do, and things that we need to address, and we don't forget them, number one, we put dates on them, so that we know when we put it on there, and when it is to come back to us, so that we don't run into a situation where we needed to look at something, and we didn't, and all of a sudden, G WIS, we lost out on, out of particular, whatever. So anyways, I'll give this to you, if you want to take a look at it.
Awesome, awesome.
And, you know, it's a simple thing, if, what we would do is we'd go through, that would be added to the agenda, it would be a pending items list, and then you would read the items and ask what is, what is.
First one that is to, she saved the agenda.
How many agreements with her, so, how many agreements where these be done, so that we won't see one of the problems.
Okay, any more Commissioner's comments?
I just like to say, ask this other question, ADA, are you familiar with the rules?
I don't know all the rules, but I know some.
I think we need to bring up to speed on that, and if there are any units that you consider handicap accessible that's empty right now, where we can go in and officially see what's been determined handicap accessible?
Right.
Do you have any units that's tabled?
Not like that, I don't think so. I know we have some units out here, but I'm not sure.
Can you put that on the pending out of the list? We need to know if there's one open or something, if we can do a walkthrough, I believe that you need to familiarize yourself with ADA, we need to make sure that we do handicap accessible units here, and, because I know nowhere in Lake Glenville State, anywhere that has steps, that's the second floor, and you can't walk those steps, that's not handicap accessible. The very minimum of getting in and out, or rolling yourself into a shower, if that's not there, it's not handicap accessible. The rail is not there, it's not handicap accessible. I'm just, I'm just talking from, I may be wrong, but some of this stuff I do know, but I'm not, I don't want to turn this into a argument, none of that, I just think that we all need to look into it, and I'm going to look into it myself.
Maybe we should reach out to some of the other areas and benchmark off of them, and see who has ADA inspectors or auditors or people like that that really know, or that they're not guessing.
Right, yeah. I think the big picture of all this is for us to get new units, and make sure that at the very minimum, central areas and area, the way of these 60 units being built in the, this stuff is over.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure that we address that, I just want to say one other thing. How we got to this point, there was some people that was, that worked hard to get us to this point, and I, and I would be, that'd be wrong for us not to acknowledge some of those individuals. Christina Vander, she was one of the board members who was ran away, treated very bad. Tears, it was hard to even see, she was a city inspector, she was treated bad. Jeff Dyche, we settled his board for maybe two to three months, disrespected, he left. And yet I came on, I came on, and we had to put up with a lot of, a lot of stuff, and and I just want to say thank you to, constantly I stayed in the mayor's ear, and he finally went ahead and brought charges against those four board members, not bragging about it enough, it was good. And if it wasn't for him doing that, we would have never got to this point, and I also got to thank the board president, Madam Angie Nelson Dyche, she appointed the hearing officer, and the hearing officer himself, and they did the right thing, and I feel that we can move forward now, and I know we got a lot of work to do, and boy, today I feel a lot better, just listening to Mr. Keating and listening to Michael Vincent, we are going to do awesome.
We're going to be all right.
Yes, and I just think that, I just think that, I'm blessed to be here, and I hope that I can learn from you guys, and I hope I don't disappoint. and I hope that I can learn from you guys, and I hope I don't disappoint you or embarrass you, and I, I just, I just thank you guys. I just want to, I just feel, I just feel with the thank you.
Don't leave yourself out, Rodney, congratulate yourself too now, brother, you made, you made people really, you know, be, be like.
There's no I, there's no I in team, this is a group thing, and, you know, we're going to all work together. My hope is that we're going to work together and try to act in the best interest of, uh, why you're here and the residents that we're trying to serve.
But I do have one question though for, um, Ms. Hutton, um, about the bids. What's the status of the bids as far as the attorney? Has that gone out, has that been?
It's been in the paper, it's been published, I, and, uh, it was in whiskey's paper, and they should start coming to pick them up, and that's why I gave it to every commissioner, the package, so if you know attorney you want to apply, you can pass it on.
All right.
Yes.
So I have one thing that I'm going to add, and then, uh, I'll move for adjournment of our meeting. Um, number one, this was a, like a, this was twofold reconstruction, so it took a little longer. Um, for our meetings moving on, I know everyone else, you know, you all have things in your life that you have to tend to. So the, my hope is to, that we get in here, we get done what we need to get done, we move on, and we have an understanding that that's what we're going to work on, and we're going to get it done. Um, so, um, so that we don't waste any, anybody's time, so we get in here, work for the people, get out of here, move on. Um, yes.
No, I'm listening.
Oh, sorry, I thought you. Um, another thing, so that you can see what we're dealing with and what we're up against, primarily with Lakeland Estates, our next meeting will be held at the community center at Lakeland Estates. Um, and then, um, lastly, um, I'm, I'm pleased with what we were able to accomplish today. So that's all I have.
I think you've got, uh, a good current right here.
Good current. Anybody move for adjournment, a motion?
Second.
Do we have a movement, a motion? All right.
You have a law in favor.
Law in favor? Any opposed?